Hello.
Is there anybody on it? There's nobody, there's no one online, alright. Alright. Well, let's do it.
Right, I'll call to order the town of Matt dessert planning board meeting for March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four.
And there's Meredith. Right in the nick of time, alright. Hello, Meredith, welcome aboard. She's almost aboard. Well, um.
Okay, hi.
Just called things to order. Good to have you with us, Meredith. We've got Anne is with us too for her first meeting. And I'll make introductions to, you know, myself, William Stanley Chair, we've got Tracy. Loses Keller says Vice Chair, we've got Gail Marshall, Alan Kimerly and our new alternate Anne Dalton. And Meredith is online as a voting member too, so I can't believe it, Meredith, but we've almost got a full board for once. Minus one alternate, so. Anybody out there who is interested in being on the planning board, contact the town office and. There you go, alright, so. Uh. Let's get going, so minutes, we've got the minutes from the twenty eighth and that was where we were going through all the warrant articles.
Tracy Keller, I make a motion to approve the playing board minutes from February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four as presented.
I'll second that.
Right. All those in the room.
Aye.
Online.
Randolph, aye.
Alright, okay, let's. Keep the show moving forward. Item three on the agenda tonight, we have the. Main Department Transportation signage request applicant is Holly Masterson, business name is the Golf of Maine Mini Golf. Physical address of the business is fifty five Main Street, Southwest Harbor. And this is under sixty sixteen sign regulations. And what that says is per for sixty sixteen five signs permitted, permanent signs directional. Says directional signs at intersections of two or more state roads within the town are permitted with approval of the planning. With approval of the Board of Selectmen and the prior recommendation of the planning board, which shall be forwarded to the selectman by the applicant with their application for. Directional sign and we have the application for the directional. Sign and was this one advertised?
So, to the best of my. Ability here, it looks like it was advertised in the Bangor Daily News on Friday, March fifteenth. And possibly. Just that, it looks like one, a one time, one timer.
Okay. Any conflict of interest on the board?
None here.
None heard. Or a higher on.
So I'm not really sure what you mean for me.
Yeah, no, you've got, it pretty much sums it up in the application, maybe you just.
Favorite, when I first applied, I was looking for three sign, one at the intersection going north southwest, right in front of near Florida and it goes to Heritage Trust. I need to delete that application and I had messaged Kim that.
Yep.
Due to, because I'm only allowed six, any businesses allowed six of these OSDF signs and I need. Four at a different location, so I'm really looking for just two from you guys, I need one at RA's corner, I'd like one at RA's corner. And then another one right in front of the community school, so that will direct traffic from RA to. The light and then to southwest.
So really the one we're only concerned with is at the community school, because.
So that was in question, if that one. That would be, so when you finish Eagle Lake Road at that stop sign, if that was you or if that was Bar Harbor, if there was.
Oh, right. Yeah, that's us.
It seems to be you.
Yeah, I got that confused with the Red Rock.
Yep, sorry, right there.
Okay, that is us, yes. Right.
Going to have just my logo. Forward and then it's going to say Golf of Maine miniature golf. And then the mileage.
Do you want a motion?
That, I guess I should ask for any public comment first. Excellent, and alright, I'll close public comments and. Yeah, this one's, the signs are really straightforward unless there's any further. Discussion about it, then we need a, to make a recommendation on the sign application. To be made to the Board of Selectmen.
I am, we recommended the Board of Selectmen that they approved the requests for two signs as indicated in the. Application that had, by Holly Masterson that is has been presented to us this evening and the two. In particular, because there are three in the original application are near the community school on one ninety eight. And at the intersection of one ninety eight and the Eagle Lake Road.
I would, I would second that recommendation.
Right, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor in the room.
Aye.
Online?
Randolph, aye.
Congratulations.
So now, do I do anything with this application or?
Well, it says that you.
Do I take it and then resubmit it?
I. I think, have you submitted anything to the main DOT yet?
Yeah, that's.
I have to have approval from the.
Yeah, so. What I do then is tomorrow I'll email Claire to make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, which meet on Monday. And then after you have their, their thumbs up, then I'd say submit it to the DOT.
Okay, so do you want me to physically take that or will you pass that on?
Maybe Kim.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, we need to keep that and then Kim will. Handle it, Kim or Claire will handle it with the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
See ya.
I hear the whole one.
Alright, and then. Let's move on and then under other, you guys got the email today from him about Kathy wanted to come in and just have a. Informal discussion about parking, so. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for doing this, I just thought, I'm not sure if we need to put in an application, what kind of request this is and I started off with. An email to Kim just to say, here's the situation, what should we do, and she said, it depends. So that's why I'm here. So we own four lots on Main Street, one forty five, one forty seven, one forty nine, and one fifty one, all contiguous lots. Someday, we're gonna develop all of those and it would be like commercial on the ground floor and apartments up above. But we're not anywhere close to that timeframe yet. And in the meantime, we like to have those storefronts offices used. And right now, we have an empty office space where our office was for a while until we moved in where we are now. Before that, it was Schneidl Fine Arts. We had to go through the process of having the use changed over from. Retail to a business office, so that's what it is now, and we really want to stick with that. And we've had a lot of interest in it of late. And, and from a variety of sources, and so our, our interest is always to make sure that we have, like, somebody using it on a year round basis. More people is, is good, I mean, that's our whole mission is, that's revitalize downtown Northeast Harbor, so we have more people to help to support the businesses and all of that, so. We have some interesting prospects and I think part of this is there are a number of people looking because the building they're currently in is on the market. And so people are looking for alternatives. The, the Garden Reserve, yeah, everybody knows they're considering building out someplace else, people are, have an office in Bar Harbor and they don't want to go into Bar Harbor half the year because it's too crowded. All those kinds of things are sort of driving people to our place. But it is a Main Street location and parking in the summertime is an issue. And so, well, I would like to be able to use. The lot that we have at one fifty one, which is vacant, if you all remember, the restaurant, one fifty one was there and that's Anturtle and that's when it burned down. It's just been an empty lot. There's a paved area at the back of it, we do have people parking there now, who are renting space from us. And, but some of these new businesses that are interested might have two or three people working in that space, so it's an office space. And they need to have off street parking. And so I'm just wondering, these are. Lots together, side by side, we own both of them, one has a building with people working in it, the other one is just sitting there. And I would love to be able to say, sure, you can have three spaces in what's now dirt, but I'll put some gravel in there. So it's not just a mud sink, you know, and so we're wondering, can I do that, do I need special permission, is this, it's, it's an empty lot right now. It's not being used and this would be functional and. I think meet the goals of the town in terms of revitalization, having more people here and working. And take off pressure on street parking, knowing half of the year it's two hour parking, so it's not good for businesses to be there, so.
I, I can't remember there, but is the, the parking there that's now is solely on one fifty one, but the driveway is on?
They share a driveway.
They share.
It goes downside of the building and I think they always shared that driveway. And so the parking is on the paved area in the back.
On the one fifty one lot.
Yes, that's where the, I mean, there was always, I think, pavement there because I think that the people who used one fifty one when the building was there. They had a couple of parking spaces.
So there's already parking existing there, there's already a curb cut and there's already an established driveway there for it. And.
So how, I assume you're talking about limiting this to, to employees, not the general public?
Correct.
And so.
And that hasn't, and that's the way it's been used so far, is people parking at the back, so it's the people who are in that building or are building next to it, where it at one forty seven. So it's the people who are working there who park there. And I, I, people who, once have I ever encountered somebody who wasn't working there, trying to park in the hole that this is actually, so.
Oh, yeah, I, my experience is a little different, I mean, that is that if there's a, a, this. A vacant space, that volume will be filled by somebody from out of state who wants to get their car somewhere. I mean, that, that's been. You know, back when we lived in Bernard. And people, and there was a parking lot across the street from our property and which was next door to where you lived. And every Sunday, Saturday, Sunday morning, despite the barriers and the signs, our, our Saturday morning, I had to go down, sometimes carrying a baby and find out who was leaving their car in my yard for a whole week. And, and that's. I mean, that's just happens all the time, and so I guess I'd be concerned about that, I can, I can mention, how you, how, I'm sure there'll be a structure for that, so.
If we, if we notice this, you know.
Others be told or.
Students is asking, can I have three dedicated parking spaces because we have. A truck that we use and I would park it there overnight because it's our daytime truck and I leave the area and doing this kind of work. But we also have people who live at the park there during the day.
Yep.
And so I would like to be able to put signs to say, okay, here are your two spaces, here are your two spaces. Right now, we just say, you know, there's a couple of spaces available for you, but it's first come, first served. And so I think that if, if it were allowed, that was one of my other questions to Kim was. Do I need a permit to do this, am I allowed to put signage in there, if I need, do I need a permit if I'm gonna put gravel in there so it's not a, a mud pit? And, and all of that was, well, it depends.
Right.
Yes.
I was not sure if she shared with you the email she sent back to me.
That's the word, looking at right now, but.
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Just for the record, you know, the email exchange, Kim outlined that under section three point four, the Wuzo that. You know, where you're in the Village Commercial District that. Parking lots are allowed and they are allowed with conditional use approval from the planning board. Use allowed with conditional use approval from the planning board, except where the code enforcement officer may authorize minor changes. In the placement and size of improvements for an improved conditional use. So, I mean, what you're describing sounds like. A minor change, I mean, you're not, you're not creating it, you're not paving it, you're not creating another curb cut or driveway, it's existing there already. It's in the back of the lot and I would.
Well, and so the, I tried to. Couldn't access the town site to say, and actually with the picture, the old picture of the building is on the town's database. But. We would, it would be about half of the lot would be taken up by cars.
Would you would be.
Back to halfway up to the.
Right, you're not taking away road frontage with parking, you're expanding the parking lot in the back of the lot, forward to about halfway on the lot.
Can I inject a thought?
Yeah, absolutely.
The only thing. Whatever one fifty one is the, the change of use thing and one fifty one probably is sort of floating as to what its uses. Well, it was, it was displaying art for a while and so now the use, the only use that's happening on it would be that it was parking.
Exactly. Right now, the description, the use code is thirty nine hundred and the description is come develop land. That's all it has.
Commercial, developable land.
I don't see any problem with that, I'm just saying, like, we, I do think that there's some. Recognition by the town that we're saying, okay, one fifty one is. A parking lot now. Until it acquires another use, it's parking.
But did you go through a change of use, you said?
Only for our offices, so the, the two, you know, the two offices, you know, the two offices there. Ours, the one that we were in was designated as. Market time. Retail, because of the art gallery that was in there, and so we had to go through the change of use through State Fire Marshal's Office, et cetera, and have a new. Use.
Okay.
Approved.
But that's a different lot than the one that we're talking about.
Yes, they are next to each other.
And this is just gonna be a temporary.
Until we, yeah, exactly, until we actually get some real plans going and the millions and millions and millions of dollars to. It turned into a much higher use, a real commercial space and apartments.
Do you have a wildest dream for that in terms of timeframe, or is it really too many variables?
When I roll the lottery?
When you win the lottery.
Mega millions, yeah.
Exactly, you know, we, we've done a little bit of work of figuring out what the possibilities are and even with that. Parking is part of the plan and so we have to figure out how can we do it and that. That can add significant cost to parking, but there's also some advantages to those four lots together. There's a six to eight foot drop between the northeast corner and the southwest corner. And so going down a few feet, we may be able to have quite a bit of parking and still build above that, so. But plans are very loose.
I'd say that, and you asked about the. The amount of gravel coming in, I think if it's, if you're under a hundred and fifty cubic yards, I mean, then that's. That's not us and I couldn't imagine you bringing in a hundred and fifty cubic yards or more for. Two or three parking spots.
So then no permit would be necessary?
No, and I, I, it would just be by Kim.
Okay. And, and signage, I mean, if we were to go and to put up signs, we would again go through the signage.
Yeah.
So you don't think that you need to put up a full application for conditional use?
Well, it's.
It says conditional use in VR one and VR two for, or wait a minute, is that?
Village Commercial.
Village Commercial. Okay. But it says condition for parking lot.
It, it, it does say that, but it also references the minor improvement clause.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, is the definition of a parking lot, is that like a paved surface?
Yeah, I don't know.
With a hay parking or, you know, I mean, is there, I'm not sure of the definitions, is there one for parking lots?
Yeah, do we?
I'd better be careful.
I've never saw about that.
I guess, we don't want to pave it up.
Parking lot, you know, parking lot, a lot on which three or more vehicles, motor vehicles are parked and which a use is not associated with. And use which is not associated with or accessory to another use established on such lot.
And since there's no building on that.
Right.
But there is a building next door and the use would be associated with that building. That's.
Yes. Yeah.
One, three.
It, it might be cleaner to do an application that goes through the planning board and that way you don't.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to work with it here, but the definition is.
It's not associated. With or accessory to. Use established on that lot, there's no other established use on that lot, so I think it is. A parking lot.
A lot on which three or more motor vehicles are parked and which use is not associated with. Or accessory to another uses, well, it, yeah, it's, it's a, so that's not a parking lot.
It is a parking lot. Because the, the building that's there is not on the same lot, we're talking about.
That's correct, that's correct.
So it's, it's.
And she says not, okay, so it is, I'm sorry, you're right, it is a parking lot.
I'm like, am I, I must be confused, yeah, yeah.
So we just need a very simple application and a very simple hearing?
Yeah. I mean, I just hate to have you get caught up in.
Yeah.
Downtown. Contratown.
Someone comes and, well, what's going on there and how come they didn't, yeah, how come they didn't come up for the public, the public gonna ask about it? Yeah, so, so it sounds like it's leaning towards a conditional use application, but I can't imagine that that's going to be a very. Extensive application and probably most of it is gonna be NA and. You know, it's.
And I just wonder if you're gonna go through that, do you only want to put three parking spaces on there, you definitely get more spaces, I would just, mostly I was thinking of the College of Atlantic and whether they ever. Have. Parking that they can rely on. In perpetuity, or would it make sense to put a few parking spaces back there on that lot so that you can help support the COA's? Request.
They did, they were not able to get an occupancy permit until they had guaranteed parking offsite and so they didn't get that.
And it's not a, a threat of getting stolen from, or you know, discontinued.
Not that I've heard, well, my most recent inquiry on that was, we're still good.
Okay.
So you probably want to have like a motion on. Ward's opinion about this or.
Well, this was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to get sense of how, how extensive this had to be, how far we had to go.
Sometimes we've had motions, sometimes we haven't, if you're cool with it being a non-motion and just. Go from.
We'll recognize the application.
Yeah.
Sorry, and I think, I know it's just such a simple thing, so April twenty fourth is the next. Meeting that Kim suggested might be.
Either time to advertise.
That'd be enough time to advertise.
Yeah, your two weeks prior, I will.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
I can have to do it quickly though.
Yeah.
To get it in.
Yeah.
But I think it would work.
Okay.
Yeah, so apply so she can have.
Do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe tomorrow. Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
We look forward to seeing your minor conditional use.
I used to live on that lot, Karen.
I used to live on that lot. The bank owned it.
One fifty one?
Yeah. It was a restaurant, we watched. The bank put us up there and we first went here, thirty years, thirty plus.
Wow, really, I didn't watch it.
It was, I was in a meeting with a client next door when the building caught on fire and we, and I, I called dispatch about it.
About the fire. Yeah, that's unbelievable, and you know, the only one of those lot, except for it's now COA is on the other one, one forty. But there's still other vacant lots, it's, it's a summer economy, it's not worth building, you know, so. But fingers crossed that lottery's gonna come through or something, it's got all these apartments in there, we're gonna get lots and stuff.
So get your application together and some Powerball tickets. I can bring my money collection over and show it to Jerry and see what he can get for it. Alright, and Gail, I know you had another item under other.
Both Alan and I are on the, on the Wuzo Advisory Committee and we are going to try and, first of all, we'd like to be on this. Agenda just as a placeholder for just every meeting, an update from the Land Use Advisory Committee, so we can keep communication flowing and. The Advisory Committee is gonna work hard this year to. Get to work right away on what it is, defining what it is that the job work is gonna be for the next year, for the next town meeting. And get to work on that, so at the first. Meeting we had last week, we came up with a, a to do list. You remember how we're at meetings and, and Noel will say, well, we had to put this on a to do list and I'm sitting there thinking, who's keeping this list, well, this is that list and. So it would be interesting to know if anybody on the planning board, we'd like two way communications, so if anybody on the planning board has any thoughts or suggestions. And can't get to the meetings themselves, then, then, you know, we want to make sure that. People are being kept in the loop, so the to do list, roughly speaking, that was talked about, and I haven't gotten anything other than my version, I haven't gotten Noel's yet. There is a desire to look at the question of a maximum lot size for specific neighborhoods in the town that already, that are year round neighborhoods. That are small lot sizes and what's going on is that. They want, the request is to look at whether or not we can do something that might curtail. Somebody buying lot A, and then they buy lot B, and then they buy lot C, and then they sort of level things on A, B and C and they build. A giant something and in the process, another year round neighborhood is eventually extinguished. So that's the, this strong interest to look at the, on the part of some, to look at the maximum lot size question, whether or not anything can be done. But subdivision rewrite went down to, I'm not quite sure what, but. The lawyers said they hadn't. Fully processed what was needed and the, so that, getting that back on and getting that done. Discussing the status of the compatibility language in six A. That's something that's been talked about before, so having a conversation about what if any changes to that might, we might want to contemplate. There is a desire to look at. There may be a solar farm ordinance conversation, I think somebody is gonna talk to the Sustainability Committee about that. What the question is, or what, there's a question of whether or not a site plan review ordinance would be a plater way to do a bunch of things. A, a comprehensive review of the allowed table uses to try to make that less. Byzantine, le- less complicated and, and more effective for people to work their way through. I'm not quite sure what, I look forward to hearing about that. Let's see, split zoning, now I took a, a, a note that I'm not quite sure, oh, I know, that was Kim was saying. You can get lots that, that.
Have two districts.
Have two, two or more districts in them and, and straightening out what you do about that. And so those are the sorts of things that are appearing on the to do list and the to do list, at least for a short period of time, is open for additions or subtractions and so if anybody has anything. They could get in touch with Jerry, they could get in touch with Noel, or we can take it back. So that's, that's the point.
Well, I think that's great, so like, we'll probably have then like a regular kind of updating.
Update, yeah, just a pretty quick update.
Other, you know, what you guys are up to and where you're at.
Yeah. Yeah. And and we'll go from there. And the goal would be to 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 work through some things, probably set them aside, work through more things, set them aside. And then when it gets later on in the year, like maybe late February, um, then you do your public hearings. Um, the boards have already fully discussed them and discussed any questions or concerns they have. Then you go to the public hearings. You have time for the public to weigh in and make changes. But you've got that time to do that without having it back against the law. And the boards have already done their work and the boards have thought of whatever changes they can. So that's not coming in from board members at the last minute. So that's um those are, those are some of the goals for the next year.
Yeah, and the the Land Use Advisory Committee is where a lot of the policy is generated that we get to process. And so sometimes I wonder why we're called the Planning Board, but the real planning happens at that that level. And I think it's really critical that we stitch ourselves into that.
Yeah, it did have to go. It does, everything does have to come back through the planning board because the planning board is the agent, is the body that has the public hearings. And the Land Use Advisory Committee is not a board. It it was, as I understand it, it was set up to make sure that there was a broad-based opportunity for the community to discuss proposed changes and that the planning board had, was up to its eyeballs in work and wasn't getting enough time to do that on top of what you routinely did on the planning board. So I wasn't around for that. Here's that bifurcation, but that's what I understand is the history. So.
It's a great board, well, great committee too, because I'm always amazed at sometimes what you can accomplish by simply originating a question at at the Land Use Advisory Committee. I mean, people with some weird zoning thing on their lot that they can't understand or are they here in this zone and not that zone, or you know, the whole I mean, the rezoning of the land for the the um, housing authority, what is it?
What the maximum, no.
No. Island housing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, there is a lot of the, the, and the complete subdivision ordinance rewrite. I mean, that's huge.
Yes.
You know?
It's very informative to attend.
Yeah.
No, what what is that reading to?
I don't know when the next one is. I don't think, I don't think it's been set.
On a.
Yeah, I would ask Claire, uh, but um, or Jen.
Yeah, I don't know if it comes through if you sign up for the
Yeah.
the notices in the town, if that's included, the Luso. I mean, I get noticed.
Usually it's.
Wasn't Noel sending us all? Wasn't he just automatically including the whole planning board?
I thought so, but I'm not sure because, because I I would get it confused because I'm on that board too.
And when was the last meeting? Because I don't feel like I was aware.
It was last.
Tuesdays, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do feel, uh, you know, it's it's a great committee, but I do feel like um, when I've been there that I sensed that the other people who are on the board, you know, stuff is brought up, Noel brings stuff up, and they're all just kinda like, okay, yeah. We're the ones that are in the thick of it. We're the only ones that like are kinda actively going through this stuff to be giving feedback. So they got a bunch of people and you say, oh, it should work this way. And they'll go, okay. Yeah. For the most part, they're not.
Actually, that hasn't been my observation. Um, I haven't been out that long, but um, I do think that it would be um, it is a little confusing at times, I think, and I've mentioned this to Noel. I he kind of ends up sort of running the meeting. And I I I'm not sure that's a consultant's role, but that's for um, he's definitely an important player there. He's, you know, he brings, he does bring the knowledge and he does um, he does a lot of the legwork and we need that. Um, but um, I think it's, I I hear what you're saying, and I think that can happen with some people, but by and large, I think I think there's, what I like about it is that as long as we have planning board reps on it, it's a broader cross-section of the community. You know, it's and and so you do get more discussion. Um, not from everybody, but you do get more discussion from some folks. I mean, that, you know, the maximum lot size thing comes up because there's a realtor who's watching this happen. Who's on this committee and wants to talk about it. Um, so.
There's no limitation anymore to to board, planning board presence in those meetings, you know?
Right.
You know, all of us could be there if we wanted to.
Correct.
But again, it's fair, it's also an energy thing. I mean, I thought it was a really good idea, but I don't have the energy to always go to that meeting after all the planning board meetings.
Yeah, I hear you.
In any event, we'll do what we can to keep people in the, who can't come to those meetings in the loop. And if there's anything that you hear or have questions about at any time that you want
Yeah, maybe.
to bring back to that that group, then you can let us know that too.
Yeah, so let's.
And we'll do our best.
Let's have that be a regularly discussed topic under other, you know, just kind of getting an update from you or Alan or whoever, um, where you're at and what you're doing and.
And on the next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, I don't know.
They kinda just pop up, it seems like.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's something we should probably work on too.
Yeah. I don't think.
That the meetings are also recorded. I mean, it's not like right there, but if you were having a burning desire to listen in, things, you know, you're only one meeting behind it, shouldn't be too bad.
Right.
Seems like we have less than a week's notice. And all of a sudden, it'll, it'll pop up on the calendar.
Well, that's something we can remember. I think somebody can say, let's, let's develop a schedule, especially if we're gonna, once you get this list and it's a work list, it's like, okay, we got, we got a certain number of weeks in the year. How are we gonna chunk this out? And when when are we gonna have to have meetings in order to accomplish what we wanna do? And so I think, I suspect that makes it fair in itself. I would hope so. I I think the calendar is important. And I think we need to go to Claire and find out what are Claire's deadlines. Because Claire, I talked with Claire about this, and she kinda starts pulling on her hair when she starts talking about the last-minute stuff from these boards about for the warrant. And we, every year it's the same. So we should be able to find out what her deadlines are and then back look backwards from there and see what we gotta do.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
My hope. Personal hope.
Nice one, Gail.
A plus.
Yep.
Wilson. It's a good group.
All right, any other other?
No, we're very glad they had you here.
Thanks. Move to a turn?
Mm-hmm.
Second turn.
Any discussion?
None, can be no discussion.
All those in the room, all those in favor in the room?
Uh.
Online?
I.
And you guys are meeting next, there is a meeting next week.
But let's so turn the.
Yes, should I try?
Yeah, you got it. It's the end button. No, it's the mouse.
Mouse.
Oh.
The Zoom is also recording.
That overhand's left shoulder.
Right.
Yeah, right there. Yeah.
There you go.